All right, guys. This is a special meeting for the Dearborn Heights City Council. It's called to order at 5:49 PM.
This session is not...
I'm sorry. This is a study session. This is not a...
This is later.
This is for later.
Yeah.
We're gonna have the study session.
We can go ahead and... And Alan C. Young, who's going to give us the audit presentation.
So you can move up to the podium. I may ask from our council members that are here to please let him go through the presentation. If you have a question, write it down. And then we can ask our questions at the end. If you feel like the question needs to be asked immediately, you don't have to go to the council chair. You can kindly respectfully ask Mr. Young if we could go ahead and... I don't know if it's your Mr. Young or not.
No, actually, Jay Wild.
Jay Wild?
Yes.
Thank you, Jay. You can go ahead and begin.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Pleasure to be here. Again, my name's Jay Wild, principal with Alan Young and Associates. This was our second year of conducting your audit. As you may well remember, year one, not to say that it was shaky, but just it was more of a challenge to get the report issued by the December 31st deadline. There was some, some questions that that was gonna happen. It ultimately did. We were able to issue the report with the date of December 31st. But very happy to say that this year, although there is still room for improvement with the timing, there was never any doubt this year that the report was gonna be issued on time, and we had about a four-day cushion. So hopefully, that'll be early December or November this year. But again, there, there was no concern at all this year of the report being issued on time. So I do have the, the handout that I brought just to summarize, rather than try to go through an 85-page document that's full of accountant language and all sorts of things that nobody wants to, to go through. So I think we've got some very favorable results for the year that I will walk us through. Now, on page three, just always like to start out making sure everyone is aware of the responsibilities for the financial statements. And the management of the city is responsible for the preparation and presentation of those financial statements. So even though we, as the audit firm, assisted with some of the logistics of putting the information in the form of financial statements, it was all based on your representation. So our responsibility is solely to express an opinion on those financial statements. So really, out of that 85-page document, the only three pages that relate to us as the audit firm are the pages that include that independent auditor's report.
That's just an opinion you stated?
That is our opinion, yes. And on page four, you'll see we give a page of its own. We did issue an unmodified opinion. That is the gold standard of opinions. It means that once we completed our procedures, in our opinion, everything in the statements and the disclosures is fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So one of those things that, 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 yes, the vast majority of the time, that's what happens. It certainly is not something that can be taken for granted. That accounting function is very important. I have worked within the last few years. It wasn't a municipality, but with one of our nonprofit clients, their books and records were in such shambles that we actually had to issue a disclaimer of opinion. That meant that we tried, but we couldn't tell if things were right, wrong, or in between. So although an unmodified opinion is what you would expect to see, you likely will continue to see, it's not something that can just be taken for granted. Page six, just some required communications that we have with those of you charged with governance. First, the scope of our audit was as described in our engagement letter dated April of 2023. We received complete cooperation throughout the process from everyone at the city, from your contracted finance team with Plant Moran. Everybody was, was fully cooperative and very helpful, helping create an efficient audit. Any necessary adjustments that were identified during the course of the audit were corrected and have been included within the statements. Your accounting policies were consistently followed and applied. We had no disagreements with management on accounting matters. And to the best of our knowledge, there was no consultation with any third parties because of any potential disagreements. Now, on page seven, it's got some summarized information looking at your balance sheet. And this is the, your corporate fund, essentially the general fund, looking at 2023 as compared to 2022. So again, this is June 30th of 2023, so we are looking back in time a little over eight months. But as you can see, your balance sheet was very strong at that point. You had over $44 million in assets. We will look shortly at kind of the composition of those assets, but much higher level than you were at the year before. And what the, the theme will be that you'll see with these numbers is there was a vast inflow of ARPA dollars for this year.
Is that really on a sign where you see the jump from 9.5 from 2.9 to 9.5?
Yes, that, that primarily is, is the creation of that, yes. So it brought in an inflow of dollars. You were able to utilize those for a number of purposes, some for expenses that had been spent in the past. So it was a, you know, a vast inflow, very favorable for, for the city. Now, as you as council members are well aware, that is not something that's going to be continuing. So you can't look for that to be coming, you know, anytime soon. So it, it puts you back in the position, you know, as always, of just needing to be very cognizant of that budget and monitoring those dollars. But the great thing is that unassigned fund balance at June 30th was roughly 15% of general fund expenditures. And also, another thing to keep in mind is those general fund expenditures, in a way, were a bit inflated because you had the ARPA dollars that you had the access to that you spent that you may not have otherwise. So really, that fund balance is even in a little bit more favorable position than that 15% level, which is always a good place to be.
What's the state, uh, the, the state's bottom line of fund balance that you have to have?
Far as I know, there's nothing other than the state does not allow you, does not want you to be in a deficit situation. I think a good rule of thumb is anything between 10 and 20% is solid. So I think this puts you in, in solid footing that would not create, create any, you know, issues with the state of Michigan. Not that I can speak for them, but on the surface, it would seem to be a good position to be in.
Thank you.
Can you explain the deferred inflows?
Yeah. What, what a deferred inflow is, is that is something that is particular to governmental accounting. And what that refers to is when you have typically receivables that don't come in until more than 60 days after year-end, that's not considered available to pay your current obligations. So it's treated as a deferred inflow, which is essentially a liability.
So can you give me an example of?
An example would be, say, you have some grant funding that you have submitted invoices for, you've incurred the costs, but the money doesn't come in until the second week in September.
Because there is a big stretch between 2022 to 2023.
Yes.
Any idea what's?
And I think that also likely included some ARPA funding that came in more than 60 days after year-end. Now, there was nothing that was any problem ultimately with coming in, so it was just a timing issue. And again, just a component of governmental accounting. As soon as that money comes in, it is then reclassified over to revenue, and, and the deferred inflow equivalent of a liability is alleviated at that point in time.
What about the non-spendable?
Non-spendable is typically prepaid expenses and inventory. So it's things that are already out the door. So it's an asset, but it's not available for you to spend. So for example, maybe you have health insurance costs that you pay in June that are actually for July. So that gets treated as a prepaid expense, which is an asset.
It's already been assigned.
But already been spent, so it's not there for you, for you to utilize going forward, right? So it's, it's required to be broken out as a separate component.
Thank you.
Now, page eight has a couple pie charts just showing what those assets are made up of. And as you can see, you've got a very liquid asset base with cash and cash equivalents being about two-thirds of those total assets. Receivables just under $5 million at 11%. Then again, the, the prepaid's were $1,002,000. Leases receivable, and that is kind of a new component under governmental accounting where those items that you have leased, it's recorded both as an asset and essentially as a corresponding liability. So it doesn't really have any net effect on your bottom line, but it's required to be broken out on the balance sheet now.
So what exactly, like, assets releasing or?
These are items that you are the lessor. I think you've got some, some rate of use. I don't recall offhand specifically what those are.
Some properties.
Yes.
What were you asking about, councilman?
The lease is receivable. We're talking about almost $3 million. That's how much we gained for the stuff we're leasing?
And what that is, is that reflects the net present value of what you're gonna bring in over the duration of that lease. So if you've got a long-term lease, you're gonna reflect that entire amount. And again, with kind of a corresponding liability in, in a very similar amount.
So this isn't for 2023?
This is, exactly. That would be whatever is remaining under that lease, the net present value of that amount, yes.
Keep in mind, on your balance... You can come up to the mic.
Keep in mind that on your balance sheet, these are all things that exceed prior to 2023. And so it's a, it's a cumulative, it's a cumulative effect. So this is, and I'm gonna use the term lifetime-to-date. So all of these numbers you see in these charts, these are, these are lifetime-to-date transactions.
I mean, the thing, sorry, the thing that I understand, I mean, this is for the time of the lease. So why, why don't we just take the amount for one year, for one year instead of... Because this is like, looking at this, I was like, wow, almost $3 million for everyone.
And I can't at all argue with your point. I think there's a lot of folks that think the, the lease accounting is very cumbersome, confusing, doesn't give maybe the best information, but that is just what the Governmental Accounting Standards Board decided to set that at. So yes, it's a number that doesn't really, on the surface, tell you much. Because again, if you've got a long-term lease, that could be 10, 15, 20 years worth of money that's gonna be coming in.
Who can help us with like, get for one-year lease, like, whatever we're receiving for leases? Is it you or Lisa?
Be the treasurer.
Treasurer?
Just stay on this side of the room.
I could certainly pitch in and find that information for you.
Please.
It's on the financial. It's just not listed on this page.
Yeah, whenever you have time, if you can send it to all the council members.
Also, you probably wanna sit a little closer.
Guess we need you.
You're not going far tonight.
Okay, then page nine just shows a breakout of your liabilities. Far and away, the largest liability is unearned revenue. What unearned revenue represents are dollars that have been received in advance of being spent. So kind of the opposite of the prepaid expense. Here's money you've got. So until, until you spend that, you've got a liability which will then be converted into revenue.
So I think this is still the restricted ARPA money, the 14 million?
Quite likely, yes.
Where do you see that?
Right here.
Yeah.
Unearned revenue, 14 million.
Then on page 10, looking at the revenues and expenditures. Again, result of that ARPA funding, your, your revenues were up, you know, almost 20% from 2022 to 2023. The expenditures went up accordingly by about 10%. But again, you, you bring in these dollars, that's what they're there for, to spend. Still, you did have an increase in that fund balance of $6.6 million that brought you to an ending fund balance of over $17 million, which is, you know, matching them out to what we looked at on the, the, the balance sheet slide a few pages ago. Page 11 provides...
I'm sorry, just going back to page 10 where it says fund balance end of year, the 17 million.
Yes.
So this, we're talking till, now we're talking till, till June of 2024?
This is, this is at June 30th of 2023.
Okay.
That is the difference between your assets and liabilities.
At that time?
At that time, at that exact day and time, exactly. Yeah.
And that's including ARPA funds?
Yes, yes.
That's about 15% of fund balance?
That's about 15% of general fund expenditures, the fund balance, yes.
Thank you.
Real quick, I'm sorry to go, but on page eight, there's a cash or cash equivalent? What, what, what about cash equivalent?
Cash equivalent would be anything short-term, like if you had a short-term, maybe a three- or a six-month CD. So I don't know offhand if you specifically had anything that qualified as a cash equivalent, but it would be a short-term investment to such a short term that would be considered to be the equivalent of cash. Excuse me.
Is, is that something like our investment that we, that could be there?
Could be.
Yes.
It could be.
Investment?
Yep.
And basically, what Jay's alluding to is most of the time when you talk about cash, cash equivalents, you talk about the duration of the, of the investment. So if the investment is due to expire within a year, most times, it goes into the cash, cash equivalent. If it's expiring beyond a year, it goes into a longer-term asset. And so what you're seeing there are those items that are listed on our, on our trial balance that are due to expire or renew within a year from June 30 of 23.
Are these anticipated profits on investments? What happens if you lose money on an investment, which happened in the past?
Well, it, it will adjust to market rate at the time when, when the loss takes place. So and, and it would go beyond this date. It would probably go into the 23, 24.
So these numbers are, are, are just what we initially invested or what we potentially will make on the investment?
They're, they're a snapshot, a snapshot at a point in time. So meaning it, whatever the market value at that moment in time was, we would have potentially made an adjustment for this.
That can change.
It, it, it likely will change. We want it to change. If it does not change, it will be a bad day for us, meaning we didn't make money. So we don't, we don't ever want that.
Just wondering, does the water fund included in this amount?
This, this is strictly the corporate fund. So just for the, the sake of, you know, presenting in a more concise manner, this is strictly the corporate fund, so this is not, the, the water fund is presented separately, you know, in the audit report itself. So that would be a whole different, different set of numbers, yes. And again, just, just to clarify, with investments, those are recorded at fair value as of the date of the audit report. So that is exactly what any investments you have were worth on June 30th. And, and the audit report itself has a very voluminous footnote regarding the investments that would break out and show exactly what investments you own, what the credit ratings are, and, and give probably more information than you would ever want to see about the investments. So there is a lot of detail that is there. So again, on page 11, the pie charts break out the sources of your revenue. And again, this is at the corporate fund with property taxes being slightly over 50% of that total, with federal grants then being the second-largest piece at over $10 million. And again, you can see the vast change from year to year because of that ARPA funding. The corporate fund only had 400,000 in federal grants to over $10 million.
So the property taxes is the one we collect for, uh, property taxes you're talking about? So it went down from 2022 to 2023? I thought it went up.
You know, and I would have to look back at, at the specific details. That can be some timing differences. It would also include delinquent taxes that perhaps the year before brought in more than this year did. So it's, it's kind of combining different categories of property taxes.
I don't know. I'm sorry, but this is, seems hard to, I mean, I know in 2023, it went up 5%.
And it just went up again another 5%.
By inflation, so, I don't know. That looks, I don't know.
And you're saying it's at 62% versus 2023, it's at 51%?
Sorry, my mic was shut off.
But it's showing the percentage on that is from 62%.
And, and that's strictly because of the, the, the increase in the federal funding that came in. So it created a much higher revenue base. So even at the, the same dollar amount, the percentage level would decrease because the federal percentage went up so much.
But it's by...
Go ahead, Lisa.
No, I was just gonna tell you what I think it is. I mean, going into 22, oh, sorry. I wasn't prepared to do that. Just the gentle reminder. A gentle reminder. I forgot. Sorry. What I'm thinking the difference between your 22 and 23 is your paid and unpaid taxes. In 22, because there was more surplus money, money out there, people were able to catch up on maybe previous tax bills paying to Wayne County. They make us whole. So I think that could be part of your difference there, is that time period, right?
So I have a question regarding, you know, quite a bit of properties get sold in the city also over the year. I mean, all these properties are uncapped and taxes skyrocket after they're uncapped. I'm just, I'm just having a hard time believing too that taxes...
There's $532,143 just a total of people that could potentially have not paid their taxes.
Yeah.
Can you email me, uh, uh, because I'd like to...
Certainly. Yep, can give you further breakdown and detail.
Mother, we're not making a vote on any of this, so this is, this is good conversation, you know?
Yep, absolutely. Happy to do that.
That is crazy, actually. What's, uh, can you explain about the state sources?
State sources is primarily gonna be your state shared revenue, maybe some other smaller pieces, but that's primarily what that is, that is gonna be. Essentially, your share of, of state sales tax.
State sales tax?
Yes.
Like, I don't know, can you give an example?
That's revenue sharing, right?
Yes, the, the state shared revenue. So every, every community throughout the state of Michigan gets their share of that allocation.
Like gas and whatnot.
Exactly.
So any idea why it went down to? So this is like every, it went down for everyone across the state, that's why?
I, I really don't know offhand.
Seems like we're losing money from the state instead of gaining money from the state.
The economy's booming. There's a lot of money in the economy, so I'm sure sales tax revenues are up.
Right, but it seems here we are $5 million short from 22 to 23.
I, I got a quick question. If you look at the majority of 2022 and 2023,
This is your audit.
Again, this is just good conversation, you know, you know, questions that we...
Yes.
That he's bringing up.
2020.
Property tax is 62%. In 2023, property tax is at 51%. Federal grants were amazing. We only did 1% 2022, but we're up 18% to $10 million, but that, that goes back to the ARPA funds.
Right, right, kind of a, kind of a one-year anomaly.
We look at state sources, and we see 14% in 2023. But then there's a decline because in 2022, we're at 17%. We see our fees are at 13% in 2022. So it seems like, and everything in 2022, despite the revenue being at 48,000, 48 million, we are losing in 2023 on everything outside of grant funding.
Really not the case because again, just even if all of those other revenue sources on a dollar basis would have increased, it still would have decreased on a percentage basis because of that $10 million inflow of federal funding.
That's true.
So it, it's kind of, it kind of creates a...
Percentage-wise, I understand. I get it. I get it. It just clicked. I get it.
Well, no, no, I have a question. So I have council chair. So what, the grant money you get regardless, you can't use it towards property taxes or...
No, so they're looking at the overall sum?
Right, but the sum of the federal money, the, the ARPA was federal money.
Correct.
This is state money.
Yeah, but then, when you're looking at the pie as a whole, you're saying I'm adding an additional $10 million? So the percentage-wise in 2022, I, it clicked. I, I just understood it. The overall pie is bigger here because there's an additional $10 million. So because this pie's a little bit smaller, the same amount of money is being spent out across property taxes, federal grants, state sources, fees. Because the amount was smaller, overall spent or have the amount that's remaining, you're, it's gonna look like a bigger percentage, but in reality, it's not. I get it. I don't know, I don't know if I explained it right, but I can tell you my brain understands it.
As another example that may, another example that may help, just take us an example that somehow you got a one-time inflow of $50 million. Automatically, that is gonna drop the percentage of every other category in half. Because that $50 million is automatically gonna be 50%.
That's exactly how I was trying to explain it.
So everything else is gonna drop, even though the dollars are great and nothing's changed with that dollar level itself.
So I have a percentage of the pie amount.
But the percentage of the pie is lower.
Because if you see the fees in 2022 was $6,386, and that 13%.
Right.
But in 2023, it's six, it's more money but less percentage because there's more stuff in the pie.
Hey, hey, you know what? We answered it.
Okay. Great, great. Okay, then page 12 gives a breakout of your expenditures. So it shows how those dollars were spent, with public safety being the, the biggest piece of that pie, over $28 million, about 55% of the spending, with general government making up $14 million or 28%. Then the other various pieces with recreation and culture and public works being the other two primary components.
So can, maybe you can come from the administration, the mayor, or someone else. I see that our, our public safety has jumped. It's great. I love public safety. I support. Let's put our money there, right? But can we, can you tell us why it went up? An additional...
$6 million.
$6 million? 6.2 million, to be exact?
Raises for the contracts.
Mayor, anything? Huh?
That was after that.
Sorry, can you turn your mic on?
Do you have an answer?
I, I do not, no. I mean, I can certainly provide some further breakdown.
I would like a breakdown, please. I mean, you audited our books at the end of the day. I mean, that's, that's ultimately what we're paying you guys to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, that 6.2 million's a huge jump.
Yep.
You know, overall, it's great, but what is it?
Sure. Yep, that, that's a question I can easily answer for you and...
Because it seems like our public work stayed the same. General government actually decreased in, in 2023 as our public safety went up, increased. I mean, even like our community and economic development in 2022 was 18 million. Then it cut in half to 9 million. Or is that 9,000?
That's 9,000, community economic development, yes.
9,000, that's 9,000, okay. There's not much there.
I mean, so what, what's the recreation and culture?
Recre... I honestly don't know off the top of my head what specifically makes up that.
Probably parks, recreation.
I don't wanna be rude.
Services.
But can anybody answer what the, answer what that is?
Recreation and culture.
That should be parks and recs and library. It, there, there, it's, it's parks and recs for sure because I matched that up to the trial balance from this time period. Yeah.
What did we do different to...
How are we spending an additional $3 million? 2.4, to be exact.
More than 2.4.
Bear with me for a second while I track down the comparative.
Van Halton Park.
Uh, page six. No, that's what I'm looking for. I'm sorry, I'm on the, I'm on the big one.
Are we gonna have a study session for that?
And I'm sorry, which line item were you looking at?
Guys, come on.
Councilman, which line item were you looking at?
What's that?
You said, which line item were you looking at?
No, it's a page 12.
Page 12.
Because you're looking at the graph, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So it says recreation and culture in, in blue. But Mr., uh, Mr. Wild, maybe you could take the notes of the questions that some of the council members have, and then you could send us an email.
Ab, absolutely.
Or I can have, uh... So yeah, so you have public safety. You're gonna send something about it. I know, uh, Mr. Controller, he's gonna send something about the leases in the city.
Well, let's get it all in one email.
Get it all in one email.
Let's put it all in one email. Let's, let's get a...
I don't know if you're taking notes, so...
Put it in layman's terms, please.
Yep, 100%.
So we gotta hear. There's your big F right there. For public safety.
Right. Okay, then, also as part of the audit, we do look at, and this isn't included in, in a specific slide, but we also look at your policies, procedures, internal controls. Happy to say that there were only two items that were included this year, which is one less than the year before. The one item that did not carry over this year was, was the best one to make go away because there was a comment last year about account reconciliations and the need for journal entries at year-end. That has been cleaned up, and we had no issue with that this year.
Thank you.
The two remaining items are just some items that are gonna take some time. First one is looking at cost allocations between funds. I know that is something that's kind of more of a long-term project that needs much more analysis before that can happen. And also your procurement policy, because I understand there are some non-compatible items with the policy and the city charter and some things that need to be worked through with that. So those items did continuous comments this year, but again, the, the most problematic from the past, So those items did continuous comments this year, but again, the the most problematic from the past, which has been there for the last several years, you know, prior to our involvement as well, was with account reconciliations and entries, and that one, happy to say, has went away.
It's been taken over by the controller's office, correct?
Can you explain what's the debt services?
Debt service would just be the funds set up to to pay long term debt that the the fund has. So that would, the expenses out of the debt service fund would just basically just be principal and interest payments on long term debt. And that's strictly general fund long for, long term debt, because any debt that Water and Sewer or any other other funds may have would be recorded specifically within that fund. Also, just so you're all aware, there is a single audit that is also required, that is currently in process. Single audit is where we look at your compliance with your federal dollars. So that, you know, is in process and should hopefully be wrapped up within the next few weeks. And that is basically the the overview that I had.
So will you, will you get all of our emails and and give us a breakdown of the things, the questions that she didn't have them in front of you?
Yes, absolutely.
And then are we going to kind of go through a little bit of this?
Was not my plan to go through the.
Not the entire packet, but you said there are three main important things in here. Or if you can give us a breakdown, I mean, you don't have to read it verbatim. Based on the audit, I know we went through this court presentation, is there anything specific that you want us to know or need us to know?
Especially the two you said mentioned, these two concerns that you had and.
Yeah, and and again, and those are in the report itself, I think it's the la- last two pages. And again, they are just a couple of comments that were there in the past that are repeated, just relating to your procurement policy. And just how the policy that you have that is written is not the policy that's being followed. Because again, there are some inconsistencies between the written policy and the city charter.
Can you said, can you tell me which which page is there? The finding?
Thank you.
The finding?
Eighty-one and eighty-two. And then the other item was just regarding cost allocations between the funds, just to make sure all the funds are are getting allocated their specific costs.
So I know it says here on page eighty-one, finding type significant deficiency.
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Significant deficiency is the lesser of the two categories of deficiencies. The more significant is labeled as a material weakness. And a material weakness is created when there is a strong likelihood that a material misstatement will exist and not be identified and corrected on a timely basis. Significant deficiency deficiency is not as significant, but still something that warrants disclosure to those of you charged with governance. So I know that's a lot of accounting speak.
It is, yeah.
But just there's two categories, and that is the lesser of the two. So you would rather have a significant deficiency than a material weakness. And the other item.
So where exactly did you find that significant deficiency in, I need like in the whole general accounting? Or is it specific?
No, no, just that, just that very specific area with the cost allocations between the, between the funds. That is strictly what that comment relates to.
For example, allocating an expense, some of it towards water.
A- absolutely, there may be some shared costs between various funds and just having a prescribed methodology where the water fund or the capital projects fund gets gets billed and allocated their specific portion of those costs.
And what about handling a petty cash? Was there any significant finding, one way or the other, with petty cash expenses, credit cards?
There was nothing that we came across with petty cash of any significance that would be necessitating, you know, communication and in the communication letter, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Wild, says here effect the water and sewer fund and library fund may not be paying their full share of expenses or could be overpaying for these items. Which one it is?
Could go either way, because without, without a prescribed methodology, there there's no way of knowing if the right costs are being allocated between the various funds. So it could be too much, it could be too little. Without that prescribed methodology, just the right amount is likely not being, not being allocated. And again, for for the city as a whole, it it's, you've still got the overall dollars, it's not changing anything for the city as a whole. But it is important for those individual funds to have that proper allocation.
So if you, how long have you been doing this for, Mr. Wild?
This is our second year.
Now, how long have you been actually auditing books and?
Over thirty years.
Over thirty years, based on your knowledge and over your thirty years of experience, what would you rate us?
I would say A minus, B plus.
Okay.
I mean, I I think, again, the two comments you've got are are relatively minor in nature.
Now, let me ask you another question.
Yes.
I'm just being honest, and I want you to be brutally honest with me, Mr. Wild. Let's just say we didn't have the ARPA funds in there, we didn't have that.
Well.
Where would you rate us?
As far as looking at your controls and processes and procedures, you'd still be at that A minus, B plus level.
Financially.
As far as financially, it's hard to say because I don't know where those dollars would have, would have shaken out. It may drop it down slightly to a BB minus, but again, that's just kind of conjecture, because it's hard to say where those dollars would have ended up. Because some of the expenditures that you had, you may not have spent, you might have budgeted differently, so so things might have shaken out in a whole different, different level. Now, two thousand twenty-four will be a whole new test because without that, that ARPA funding coming into this level. You know, again, it just becomes all the more important, you know, that that the budgets be developed and prepared and and to see where that bottom line ends up, you know, year after year.
So my question to you is right now, with the city sitting revenue wise, where do we sit with the surplus number wise?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent.
Right, and and I really don't know where things stand, you know, five months into the next fiscal year. So that's something that I'm sure you're communicated.
But is that fifteen percent would include all the contract pay with the increases?
Well, no, he doesn't know, this is from June thirty.
No, that that was strictly fifteen percent of what you spent last year. So I, so I do know you've got some increased costs because of some new contracts that are that are in place. So yes, you've got, you know, that that so-called surplus, it's there, you know, again, budgets are just going to be very important.
I know you have a recommendation in here, so this recommendation for a formal process to put in place, is that for the controller's office?
Most likely, that would be where the the impetus would come from, to put together that cost allocation plan with 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 input from the various departments and and other entities, but the 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 main thrust of that, yes, likely would come from the controller's office.
It says here too, that city will look into hiring an external consultant to devise and implement a complete strategy. Whose idea was that?
I know I've only been here a couple of weeks, but based on the information that I've seen, it's come from the the mayor's office and the controller's office. They were working on that, you know, collectively. The company that they're looking at, we have not approved anything or had not brought it to council, but we have a company in mind that we're working with to try to come up with a a game plan, put together a proposal to bring back to council.
Mr. Mayor, is that Plan Moran again or?
Which ones, I was going to actually answer your first question. The policies and procedures for procurement, we actually tried to put that about a year and a half ago. We brought it to your attention and they were not implemented. So that's the policies that Mr. Wild is talking about. So this is something that Plan Moran recommended over a year and a half ago. And for some reason, they were not implemented by council. So if you guys are interested to to make sure that we eliminate this finding. We just have to put those policies or procedures for procurement back and the council has to approve it. We did put it in front of, front of you guys to look at, maybe, I don't, I think it's more than a year and a half ago.
It's something that we voted down?
I'm not sure if it was a study session or an actual meeting, but I know they were put in front of you guys. And this is something that Plan Moran suggested, and I know Westland is using something similar.
So is this for the process of putting bids out and correctly?
It's a procurement procedure.
But right.
It's everything.
Does that include that?
It's procurement procedure has everything, A to Z.
Guys, come on, let's come on, let's get back, Madam Clerk.
Yes, yes, sir, it does include that.
Yeah, includes budgeting, I think I I remember.
It includes budgeting, PO, procure, um, bid process, the whole nine.
Madam Clerk, if you can get with maybe the mayor and Mr. Farina and find out which one it is that we turned down. I'd love to see the resolution, please, thank you.
As far as that single audit goes, where they audit federal monies that come to us.
Yes.
Is the ARPA money involved, included in that?
Yes, that would be.
And that's in here?
The the single audit is still in process.
Okay.
So what would happen is there will be a separate report that'll be issued for the single audit. And if there were to be any compliance findings that we had, that would be the forum that would be communicated.
Also, on the findings, you say there's an issue with the police and fire pension trust fund. Can you elaborate on what the situation is with it?
I'll.
It's in, it's in the causes on page ninety-one. Cause, I mean, eighty-one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's about allocating towards water and sewer.
Yeah, I think again, it's just getting to the fact that the the charges have just been in place for a long time, haven't been analyzed, looked at, there's no assurance that they're that they're accurate or or make sense. So it's just kind of an overall issue with the with the allocations, and that's just one.
Who monitors them or checks them, audits them, those funds? I mean, is that something that you look at?
Yes, we we audit the entire, every fund within the city, yes.
And you're saying there's, it hasn't been changed or addressed, situations?
The allocations haven't been changed or addressed in years, yes.
Do they need to be?
Yes, that's what the comment's getting at, is there should be a a fresh look at how those costs are allocated between funds and a prescribed methodology.
Do you see a problem with paying pensions out in the future with, if we keep this up?
No, 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 it it, nothing to that degree, it's just making sure that costs are matched between the various funds.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, for example, the prior administration would, the the secretary in the mayor's office would allocate a portion of her salary towards ordinance and a portion, because she tracked ordinances.
Absolutely.
Portion towards water. Water is always the cash college, true in every city. And and the the water is an enterprise fund, so it, you know, a lot of things are maybe allocated there to. Former Councilman Ray Musket used to always scream about, you know, repair to a truck and DPW is being being paid for with water money.
Any other questions, guys?
So in the, in the last page eighty-two, going back to the procurement, that the procedures that the mayor mentioned. Are we talking about having our own purchasing department? That's why you are? That's what we need?
Obviously, the the controller's office will handle that, so that's one of the things we request is to get a procurement department correct.
So like a purchasing?
Yeah, right now, we we have one person, you know, the way it's done, you know, it's pretty much.
So basically, any purchasing in the city has to go through that department?
Yeah, so every city has a procurement department except, I mean, there's, every city that I know of has a procurement department except ours.
And that would be a part of the controller's office?
Yes, or, yes, it'd be part of the controller's office, correct. Unless it gets bigger, then we would have to separate that department.
Thank you. Any other questions, guys, we still have a meeting, we have to talk and talk. Seeing none, any questions from our, from the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and just pause it then, and then we'll take a quick two minute recess so that we can switch and get ourselves ready for the regular. Thank you so much, Mr. Wild.